This is August 21st, 2017, at 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Thank you. Kathleen, can we get roll call, please?
McCambell?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Okay. First on the agenda, we have a tenure award, and we only give these to people that have a strong mental capacity. They have to pass the psychological test 15 times. But, no, she's just been a phenomenal employee, and we've been blessed to have her for 45 years. And so excited to give this out to her. And I also have another surprise, so don't you get up yet. But first, let me read this one. This is a certificate of recognition in grateful recognition of 45 years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington as of July 6th, 2017. We hereby present Sharon Stonehouse with the certificate of recognition, Shane A. McCambell, Mayor. And I also would like to present you with the Mayor's Award as well. And it says, "Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment to your job, the people of this community, and the Burlington Police Department is noteworthy, and we recognize you today. Thank you for 45 years and counting. You make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On August 21st, 2017, this Mayor's Award is presented to Sharon Stonehouse." Come on down. That's amazing. Forty years of teaching was a long time. Forty-five years.
Would you please come and have a couple of words, please? Forty-five years, you say?
Whatever you want.
Right at the microphone.
Um, I just think it's been, I guess, with some very good guys and ladies. Things have changed over 45 years. I had a face-up with somebody once, a young lady that, when I started working there, if we had typewriters and correction tape, they thought that was pretty good, and they didn't know what a keyboard typewriter is anymore. So, if you're going to just take that or whatever. Anyway, thank you.
Heard a guy say once that you're only as good as the employees that you have working for you, and it may sound cliche, but it's true. It's true. And we've got great staff because of people like you, so. All right. Next on the agenda, and Sharon, you don't have to stick around for the rest of this. You can get right on out of here. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have four resolutions. The first approving demolition nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving the applications for the purpose of receiving benefits from the state revolving fund water resource restoration sponsored project. The third is a resolution approving inter-local agreement between the city of Burlington and Des Moines County for the 2017 Bernie Justice Assistant Grant, the JAG program award. And the fourth is a resolution approving lease agreement between the Steamboat Senior Citizen, Inc., and the city of Burlington for lease of city-owned building located at 501 Jefferson Street. We also have two public hearings set for September 5th. The first is a consideration of an ordinance amending Section 135.11 driveway culverts of Chapter 135 Streets and Sidewalks of Burlington Municipal Code. And the second is consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Vineyard Street area drainage project. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed? I see none. Counsel?
No, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved in second. Kathleen, can we vote?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Well done. This is time now set for hearing for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 914 Loisa Street, city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions publication has been made in the Hawk as prescribed. We just have one?
Yep. This property is located at the corner of Loisa and South 10th Street, at the northeast corner, 914 Loisa. It's a property the city acquired through the abandoned building program. It was in a condition that did need removal, so it is a vacant lot. The home had been demolished from it. We have received one bid from the neighbor to the north at 1226 South 10th Street in the amount of $500. Some of the conditions for the lot would be if the adjacent property owner purchases the lot, they shall combine with their existing adjacent lot within 30 days of sale by the City Council. If someone else were to bid or purchase the property, they would have to receive a building permit within 60 days of sale for construction of a single-family home. That would be, need to be completed with 180 days of approval of the sale by the City Council with 180-day extension granted if progress is being made, so. Currently, again, just a single bid from the property owner to the north to combine with their lot.
Okay. And is Randy here tonight? There's Randy right there? Okay. Good to see. And Randy, you've got a bid of $5,000, I see? I'm sorry, my glasses weren't on. Apologize. Okay, we have an opening bid of 500, so we're going to, we're going to open up this bid. If somebody else has a bid that they'd like to add, we're going to ask that you come to the podium initially and give us your name and address, and then put in your bid, and then we'll go from there. I can see all the excitement. This is going to be fun, guys, so prepare yourselves. We're starting the bid, we're starting this at $500 with Randy John. Do I have another bid? Of this wonderful property that's going to make somebody a lovely, lovely home. I can just imagine kids playing and frolicking in the grass. No other bids? No bid for 550? Okay, we've got a bid for $500 for Randy John going once. Bid going twice. Sold. Mr. Randy John for $500.
I motion close?
Second?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
I know, you were expecting so many more bids, so was I.
I know. No, I'm all thrown away. Okay. Your Honor, I have a resolution approving sale of property locally known as 914 Loisa Street, city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second?
And I would, and I'd like to amend that. We do the amendment now? Yes?
Yep.
Okay. So, to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 914 Loisa Street, city of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to Randy John of 1226 South 10th Street of Burlington, Iowa, in the amount of $500.
Second?
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me.
On the amendment?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay, now it's as amended?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Well done. Mr. John, congratulations. We appreciate your cooperation on this process. You could have started your bid a little higher, but we'll talk about that later. Thank you, sir. All right. Okay, next is a consideration of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa, by amending the standard penalty for violation of the city code. Thank you, Chief.
Now, if you wanted clarification again or not, but there hasn't been any changes. Basically, it's taken away the imprisonment part of the city code for simple misdemeanors. So, in other words, if you're charged with a simple misdemeanor under the city code, the judge, his only option would be a fine instead of imprisonment. But with that said, if it's written under a state code, then that same, the original penalty would apply.
Right. Question? Can you explain again why we're dropping that?
It's the indigent defense bill fund. The way it sounds to me, they're going to set up a separate fund that'll have, you would, we would be liable to pay into that fund under a simple misdemeanor if they were to serve jail time and to get a defense, let's say, a public defender, if you will.
Right.
I don't know if I made that clear.
Yeah, there was a court case a couple of years back where, through that process, it was directed that indigent defense would be provided by the state. Well, the state now picking up the indigent defense, and as they're looking to find ways to alleviate costs, this last legislative session passed legislation that if there was, if we had something on the books that they were being prosecuted under, or that they had been-
That involved jail time.
That involved jail time, that we had prosecuted them under, that could possibly, that could involve that, the cost for indigent care would be passed from the state to us. Now, we don't have any clue how often that may or may not occur. It's just, as this has come about, this is something communities across the state are going through this process of, I don't know that everyone is, but a lot of, a lot of communities are eliminating the code sections that would have this as a possibility. It puts some limitations on the department, and they just have to be pretty, just think through how they're going to write up the original charges against the defendant. There might be some spots where you want to have potential jail time be part of what happens. With this change, we just need to make sure that when they're writing up those charges, that they're under state codes instead of city codes.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for staying on top of this, too.
Yep, thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience that has a comment or a question? Counsel, or questions or comments?
I'm a big-
Move to close?
Mm-hmm. My second.
Second, pardon me.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Kathleen?
McCambell? Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa, by amending the standard penalty for violation of the city code.
Second? We have a motion in second. Any comments, further comments, counsel? Okay, Kathleen?
McCambell? Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, next, we have a consideration of a lease agreement between the city of Burlington and Weingard Realty Company for the Rock Island Freight House property at 710 North Front Street. Mr. Tisland?
Yes, the city currently has an existing lease with Weingard Company for the Rock Island Freight House property at 710 North Front Street, locally known, commonly known as Big Muddy's Restaurant. The city owns the land upon which that building lies. Weingard owns the building, so this lease is for the land portion of it. That lease was set to expire in 2031. They have desired to start a new 25-year time period based on looking at it, having a new sublease or running the business at that location, wanting the full 25 years for someone else coming into that facility. So, they have requested that. We amend our lease by updating it to a new 25-year lease. Most, all the conditions stay similar. The current 25-year lease is for $3,000 annually. The option to renew in 25 years is for an additional 25 years at $6,000 per year annually. So, again, this is just for the land portion of it, and no substantial changes from the previous lease agreement were made, but allows for a new term for the, for Weingard Company.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wrap that one up, and I'll come up with the next.
Anyone from the audience have a question or comment? Seeing none, counsel? Anything? I move to close the public hearing, then?
Second.
Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the lease agreement between the city of Burlington and Weingard Realty for Rock Island Freight House property locally known at 710 North Front Street.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Mayor Proton. Next, we have a consideration of plans, number four. Consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Vineyard Street area drainage project. Mr. McGregor?
There is actually no plans and specs in front of you right now. I don't know if you've noticed, but we have a set date that we moved until September 5th. Fortunately, when we published, we published for this date, so we had it on the agenda. I know that there are a couple of gentlemen here that saw that probably in the paper, and, so we don't have any plans and specs available for you, but I would say maybe just take their comment.
Okay. Anybody from the audience, any concerns, comments for tonight? Yes, sir?
John Bouton, 2216-
We all know who you are. You have been patient, sir.
I know, I know. I think that the, everything, almost everything is going as planned. I still have a little bit of problem with, and I talked to the city engineer a week and a half ago, and I wasn't real happy with the little metal grate thing that he was going to put in the ditch, and he wasn't really going to fill the ditch in. So, even though you had a grate there, you had the cement piece going down three feet, which meant the same type of problem that you had before that. So, he hasn't, he considered what I had told him or asked him about, but he hasn't got back to me about that, so I just wanted to bring that up at this time. I'd like to have that completely smooth, maybe go down about six inches from the road base, so that if somebody drives over that, they're not going to flip their car over like they have in the past. They'll just continue on going. So, I think it's a big safety thing. So, I think it needs to be, whatever kind of design they come up with, it needs to be completely smooth all the way across there.
I made a note.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience, questions or concerns? Okay, counsel?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, twice. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Okay. Number five, next, we have consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Jefferson Street parking improvements. Mr. McGregor?
If you could throw out that slideshow for me. In front of you is the plans and specs for the Jefferson Street and the 200-block parking. As you can see, here's kind of the basic layout. The top picture is what the current schematic looks like, and the bottom is what we plan to go to. I guess I didn't realize that the parking number was actually 14 standard spots, and there's some handicap spots created. So, I think I maybe told you another, not correct number prior to. If you hit the next slide. This is kind of what the tip, this is what it looks like now. It's kind of the back of curve will be at this saw cut line on the left-hand picture, and then I believe, I'm not sure where it'll be on that right-hand picture. I think Jesse described that last week. Essentially, everything to the left of that left, somewhere in the middle there. You want to hit this last slide? The estimated cost that I originally told you is $60,000 to $70,000. Unfortunately, in some of the calculations at engineering, there wasn't a replacement for the concrete in the area that was being cut out. So, when that number was figured back in, it comes out to $115,000, which is almost double, it is double what I told you. So, obviously, that's a major increase on a project.
That is, Nick.
It is. I think it's, the project's still worth doing, and we still have funds available to do it come out of road use tax. If approved tonight, we will go out to bid tomorrow, receive bids, and then try and get it done this fall yet.
Okay, okay.
After, after, I think we're planning on early October start.
Okay, okay.
We got an email today from a citizen disagreeing with this plan. I'm just wondering, Downtown Partners, did they play a role in this at all?
Correct. We, in the development of the plans prior to and then partway through, we invited several departments, including PD, Parks and Rec, Forestry, and Downtown Partners in all of this conversation, to make sure we were designing it to meet what we wanted. In the end, we tried to keep it as low cost as possible without doing, you know, too much aesthetic work, kind of get the nuts and bolts of trying to create parking spots.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
I do, sorry.
Sorry, Nick. She was, no, we still had questions, Nick, so.
Yeah, sorry about that. I guess I should definitely have brought this up when we, at the work session. I just wanted to make sure I questioned just, you know, how, how the mistake like this got, you know, made, and just, you know, bringing our attention to it, just so hopefully it doesn't happen again in the future.
Yes.
I hate, I make mistakes like this, too.
I would say the workload of the engineering staff right now is probably, we are underneath a big backlog.
Right.
And we're trying to shove, you know, the roundabout agency street, which was fully designed in-house. And there's no, I mean, I don't want to say there's no excuse, but ultimately, yes, it's a mistake.
There are reasons.
But, you know, they were, they were estimates, and they're all estimates until they go out to bid anyway.
Right.
But, yeah, we should have probably had a more locked-down number prior to bringing it to you.
But just, just to add to that, though, we have in the past also had, so just so that people know where everything went right, and, you know, we went through the process right, and the bid still did come back higher, too. So, that's just a process that can happen. I'm just, I'm just-
Yeah, right, yeah.
And vice versa, they've come back lower, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And this year's been fairly competitive for concrete work for the bidding process, so.
Yeah, I know, and not to, because it's been a very long time since we've ever, you know, had an initial estimate that was, you know, fine, great, and then had another estimate, and it's like, whoa, what's happened? So, you know, just got to throw it out there to be-
Do that again, Annie, do it.
Which one?
That whoa thing.
Whoa, I don't know. But you guys are doing great work. So busy.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
It really hasn't been that long since we messed up that badly.
Are you sure? Oh, come on. I was sure they got both.
Hey, Jim, Jim, whoa!
Whoa! Shit. Stop saying that.
Sir, are we good, guys?
I forgot.
Public.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the public? I see none. Counsel, are we good?
I am.
Yes.
Move to close the public hearing, then, Your Honor?
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the, approve the plans and specifications for the 2017 Jefferson Street parking improvements.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Nick, what is going on here?
I'm waiting for that. I saw Paul, and I pulled that.
Okay.
Starts running.
Okay, resolution awarding contract for the 2017 flow metering project.
Second?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mann?
That's the reason why I jazzed up. So, in front of you is, we went out to bid for flow meters to be put without, throughout the system, in our sanitary sewer system, and even in some of the combined, to try and be able to have an understanding for separation purposes, but also future purposes with the sewer master plan. Questions about the locations? I know that there's a systematic reason why they chose them, but ultimately, it comes out to, I think, 10 non-contact four submersibles. They'll be located in certain areas and then moved as needed. Hit the next slide. The engineer's estimate was $115,000, and we received two bids, one from Hawk and one from GPM. Hawk came in at $118,000. Staff recommends approval for Hawk.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, none? Counsel, you have any further questions?
Nope.
No? Okay. We're all good, Your Honor?
Thank you, sir. Kathleen?
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Well done. Number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving contribution to Dankwart Park Pool Dome project.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you for that second. Appreciate it. Okay, who do we, who's here? What's the crazy people? You going to talk about that?
Yeah, so this is kind of a continuation of the pool lease agreement that was previously approved by counsel. As part of the, I guess, their efforts to move forward with the pool dome, they're looking to apply for some grants. Those grants require some local match, utilizing some of the funds that we have in our budget and through the lease is the route, we're looking to go forward with this. So, they are looking to count the $25,000 that's in 2018 fiscal year budget for pump improvements that is a project we'd be looking to do towards the, their grant application. Also, looking to receive contributions from the city totaling $67,500 between September of 2018 and April of 2021 for deck improvements at the Dankwart Pool. Currently, we have, as I mentioned, the $25,000 in the FY '18 budget for pump improvements. That's something we can delay until next spring so that it could count as an improvement for this project. Ultimately, would benefit this project as well. And in FY '22, we have $100,000 for the concrete deck replacement at the pool. That's the full deck replacement, coming from hotel motel tax. They're looking to do the deck improvements with this grant application for, while they put up the dome over the pool. The $67,000 would essentially come from the lease payments that they make through their lease agreement, but would just be counted as contribution from the city. be counted as contribution from the city. As per the lease, they paid $2,500 a month during their lease period, which is 22,500 a year, essentially, or per cycle. So that's where that 67,500 comes from. It matches that amount. It's not budgeted, but it would be coming from that source of funds.
Right.
And then that 100,000 that's in the CIP would no longer need to be there because that work would be completed with this project. So that would be eliminated from the CIP as well.
Sounds like a win, win. So why do they need to redo the deck now?
Part of it, maybe they could explain as well, they're gonna do footers, footings for the deck improvements, for the foundation, place the dome around the perimeter of the pool. And there is some broken up concrete in there now that would need to be replaced. Also, we're gonna have to run, change some of the water lines, disconnects between the small waiting pool and the larger pool, and do these upgrades before moving into the, with the dome, dome structure.
And is the fence going to be moved?
Fence would be moved to the outside of the dome structure.
So the deck has to be wider, in other words?
Yeah, and we have a couple representatives here that might be able to explain a little bit better, but.
Let's have reps come. Anybody but John Freeling.
Guys, I basically knew the answer to this, but I wanted you to explain so people at home know what's going on.
We're gonna replace the vast majority of the concrete anyway as part of this project, so we figured while we're doing that, we'd just do the whole deck at the same time, then it's done and ready to use for the long term.
So how far out are you moving the fence?
About five feet on each side.
Okay, so in other words, the deck is.
It'll be slightly increased in size by about, which is a good thing. I think we've, something we should have been doing all along, anyway. So, yeah, thank you.
Any questions from the audience? There's my friend.
Yeah. My name is Dean Finacy. I live in Burnet, Iowa, 2217 Northern Drive. Okay, I got one question, and it's two-part story, too. In Iowa City or Des Moines, it had the same kind of thing, and the wind blew it down, down to the ground. And also, in Minnesota Twins, had the same kind of thing. They had a heavy snow and ice, and it came tumbling down. Can you reassure me that this won't happen here with this same thing? That it won't fall down and injure people who are in that pool?
I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have them, I'm gonna have them come up and answer you. Dean demands an answer tonight, gentlemen, and we need to address that.
One thing I could say is, this pool dome is, does have to be engineered, has to be, we have to have stamped engineered drawings. We can't guarantee with any structure in Burlington that some powerful wind or something wouldn't damage it, but it will be designed and constructed to meet snow and wind loads as required by the state of Iowa and our building codes.
Dean's concerned, John?
Going to the question about, I'll use the, I'll use the Metrodome, for instance. If you saw something where there was damage to it, obviously, we wouldn't have the kids in there. We wouldn't have it open until that got fixed. Can we guarantee it won't come down? No, just like, like you said, any building, we can't. But it will be designed to withstand what we would, we would see around here.
Yeah, they've designed it according to where we are geographically. They're from Canada, so they're familiar with snow. Most of them go into cold weather climates, so.
Even the Uni-Dome came down, maybe twice, but, so, you know.
Can't promise.
But they weren't from Canada that built the Uni-Dome, so. I said they weren't from Canada that built the Uni-Dome, so it's different. Satisfied, Dean?
Yeah, I'm just a little bit concerned about that.
Any other comments, concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
All right. Good program.
Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay, number three.
I have a resolution approving the acceptance of a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant number EMW-2016-FH-00382.
Second.
Wow, that's something, isn't it?
A lot of numbers. You're good, but Chief, talk to us.
Good evening. So I have the same presentation from last week, just a couple additional slides, so I probably won't hit every point unless you want me to give the same presentation again. I'll kind of go through, and we'll have more of a discussion. So just a little of the background, you know, back in January, got an offer to apply for the SAFER grant for six people. Myself and the deputy chief, more the deputy chief, worked on the grant, submitted it. Last month, we were awarded the grant. At the time, we estimated the cost over three years to be about 631,000 to the city. That added one, that added, again, six people to the fire department. During the budget, after we submitted the grant, council approved an additional firefighter. We have not hired that person, so we were holding off to see if we would get the SAFER grant. Then just the note there on the call volume, and I think I've probably talked about that enough, but the justification, the same things that we used when we wrote the grant. The big thing they were looking for was adherence to NFPA 1710, has response times, response numbers, the OSHA two in and two out. We can't start interior firefighting until we have four people on scene, two people in and two people out. The number one thing that we were looking for as a fire department was being able to staff a third ambulance, and that is to keep our response times as quick as possible. So one thing we do a lot now is we're running across town, especially when Station One, the central street ambulance is out, Station Two has to cover their territory a lot. So, and also, when you see the map of where our stations are, Central Station is kind of a misnomer. It's kind of too close to the river and too far to the south. There's a lot of, a lot of town off to the northwest that it's not within the five-minute response time. And also with the call volume, the way it is, it's a lot of times we have two ambulances out. When we get to the third ambulance now, what you have to do is you have to take the firefighters off the engine and put them onto an ambulance to cover the call. So there's overtime savings. We're putting two on each shift, but only raising the minimum staffing by one. That'll give us some savings there. And the one point I did add from last week was the airport coverage. I kind of forgot about this, but the airport is looking at getting their certification back, which means every time there's a commercial flight, we have to have a firefighter at the station that's certified in airport protection. So there's 10 flights either, there's five in and five out per day, so that's at least a half an hour per flight that we're committed to. So at the best, you're talking about five hours that there's, there's one person that they don't do anything but cover the airport for fire protection. So that's, that's a huge cost to us. It's something I've, I've talked to Jim about, maybe, I don't know, sometime down the road, we'd talk about that with the airport, because it is very expensive for us to have somebody there. That's all, Monday through Friday, there's the 10 flights per day, and then on the weekend, it's a little less. But that does, back when we first started doing that, we had a minimum of 12, and we had about half the calls that we do now. So it wasn't a huge deal to leave one person there, but it is a big deal now. I did throw this in there from last week. That's a five-minute response time from the different stations. So the red territory, that little red dot there is Station Two, a central station. We call this affectionately known as Station Three. That's the West Burlington Fire Station. So, as you can see, there's a lot of area that it covers in green that's, that is the city of Burlington, that we can't drive to in five minutes. And that's just the drive time. That's, if you're already sitting in the ambulance or whatever, fire truck, and the call kicks out, then you start driving. It takes you five minutes everywhere from this, from central, this outer reach. That's how fast, that's how far you can go in five minutes. But then you also have to figure, there's a minute, or maybe two, if it's a fire, getting your gear on and getting out the door. So now you're talking seven minutes. So those are really generous when we say a five-minute response time. That's under the best case scenario. So you can see, all this area right here, this is all city. There's no, there's no, currently, there's no station that can cover that in five minutes. It's not possible. But when we add in West Burlington, that, that pretty much covers everything but this little bit right up in here. So that is very helpful to have that third station. And I shared that last week. That's how we have our town divided up, that pink line there, that divides north and south. Those are our two stations, and this is the third. So you can see that the vast majority of the calls are north of that line. The budget implications, these are the figures that Stephanie worked out. So for the rest of this fiscal year, being as how we didn't hire the one person, that amount that we would pay, our cost is covered with that person. Plus, there would be some overtime savings. The FY19, next year, about 46,000, FY20, 219,000, and FY20, 21. Again, that's only three months covered under the grant. So there's nine months where the city's covering 100% of the cost of the six firefighters. So. And then FY22, of course, that's the city. The whole cost is borne by the city, no grant money in that year. And I wrote down there, it's an estimate of our overtime savings, about 75,000 per year. So based on what we did with the last SAFER grant, so I think that's a pretty conservative estimate.
Sounds good. Are there any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Thank you, Chief.
All right, then. If we're good, let's, let's take care of business. Kathleen?
Campbell.
Yes?
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Did you like my hesitation, Chief? Did you like?
Yeah.
It was all for effect. All right. All right. Well done. Okay.
I have a resolution calling for an appointment to fill a council vacancy.
Second.
Thank you.
Kathleen, Kathleen had some conversations with the county auditor, just in regards to what the potential, what the possibilities are for moving forward with filling this seat. By state statute, or state code, provides two different mechanisms. One, filling, filling the seat by appointment within 60 days or calling for a special election. Timing on this does not allow you to go through a special election process. It makes it rather difficult when it's more than the 60 days to the next general election to, no, I don't know how the state code, it doesn't really deal with this, this circumstance for using a special election process, essentially, or regular election process. So the recommendation from the auditor is to move forward with the appointment process. From, based off of what has been done in the past, Kathleen looked at how this is, how the timing that's been done in the past. By, you have to provide notice in the paper if you do go through the appointment process, public notice for.
Standard four to 20.
Four to 20, prior to making that appointment. You have to, notice of your intent to fill by appointment. What we have done in the past when we have done this, if you want to kind of go through that, because you've got it there.
Okay, yeah, I was going to publish notice in the Hawkeye for the vacancy on Tuesday, August 29th, and then the deadline for people to submit letters of interest. They'll submit it to the city clerk September 6 by 5:00 PM. And then this council at the next work session, which would be September 11th, you'll do interviews and review all the letters that you receive. And then on September 18th, at that council meeting, you'll appoint and swear in, also swear in the new council member. And then after the general election come November 7th, the top, non-top vote, non-inconvent would be sworn in early. Once I get the, once I receive from the Des Moines County Auditor the election, you know, schedule that they've completed it, and then, and then, so they'll start early, and then the other two council members, because there's three openings, will swear them in December, and they'll start January.
And how will people apply? Can they do it through email, or through, does it have to be hard copy, their interest and?
Yeah, if they email it to me, they need to make sure that I say received. I'll say received, so that way they know I received it. Otherwise, they can just, it has to be in by 5:00 PM on September 6.
Okay.
What if we opt not to fill the spot? Can we do that?
Technically, by state statute, you're supposed to either fill it by appointment or go through a special election process. And our timing here just doesn't work well for the special election process.
Yeah, I understand that.
But you're saying it has to be in by the 6? I thought, I thought you said the 29th.
No, September 6.
Okay.
29th is when she put it in the paper.
Yeah, I'll publish it in the paper.
Okay.
Now, the idea of doing, people applying for the position, there's nothing in state statute that requires that. That's just a process that's been done here in the past as a, so that's just a model to use based on what we've done in the past for how to fill a seat in this circumstance.
So if the council chooses to do so, we can make the appointment.
Yes.
Right.
Now, there is, of course, the process by state code where that, and it's happened before, too, where we've received a petition to calling for a special election. I don't know how that would get handled by, if that were received at this point.
I don't expect.
How that would get handled by the county, when it probably couldn't be scheduled before the general election.
Right. She acted like I would receive it, you know, someone would submit it, I would receive it, but I would need to explain it's not really possible.
Okay.
Okay.
Any concerns from the audience? I see none. Okay, counsel?
And would I be out of line to mention that I would have some specifications on who that person might be at this point, or should I hold off on that, too? We discussed it on the interview day or whatever?
I think.
I would just hold, I have my word.
Okay.
Until we get down to it.
Whatever you guys want. It's fine.
Is that, is that fine, you guys?
I think whoever, whoever should come forward and send a letter in, we'll sift through and.
Okay, we're good?
And whoever this is, is gonna serve till.
Just, yes, just until the general election.
November.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
First meeting after the general election.
Oh, gee.
Then the top vote getter will be in place, yeah.
So you, all you folks out there that are gonna run for city council, you just be prepared that you're gonna, one of you's gonna be sitting here the first meeting in November, after the election.
After certified results.
Right, after they get the certified results.
So potentially, the second meeting in November.
Right, unless I didn't have it in time.
Sitting in this chair right beside me. Poor, poor lad. Anyways.
The reason I mention that is because when I first ran for council, I ran to fill an expired seat, and no one told me this ahead of time. So I thought it was gonna come starting on January 1. All of a sudden, hey, you're starting now. So I just wanted people to understand that.
So you had to put away your golf clubs and hurry up and get down to City Hall, huh? All right.
You're on, you're up now, buddy. So here we go.
Okay. Kathleen?
McCambo.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
Okay. You guys have been fantastic tonight. Let's just keep this party going. This is where we will be entertaining comments from the audience. If somebody has a comment or concern we have not addressed, now's the time. Dino?
Yes, my name is Dean Finacy in Burnet, Iowa, 22117 Northern Drive. I live here in Burlington. The usual things, how is it going with my place at Bridge?
Everything is, everything is still on schedule, but we're looking, that's looking for going out to bid in the spring.
I'm gonna keep this up till you get it done. Are you, now, are you going bye-bye or are you staying?
It seems to be a question that's on a lot of people's minds right now, Dean, so we'll see how that goes here.
Well, I want you to stay, because then we can keep talking about the Cubs, and maybe we can all cheer when they win it a second time in a row.
This guy goes straight for the kill shot.
I like how you roll, my friend.
Okay, I know I'm gonna roll. Number three, it would be nice, another thing on the row is, I still want cash bridge to be done before I turn 90. I'd like to see it done. I think we need it because there'll be people in the park, and that's, when I was parked once, they had tire cars pull up, and I think it'd be a good idea. And Labor Day is coming up. I wish you all a happy Labor Day. Don't get too wild, don't behave yourself, all of you, and may the Lord bless you and keep you and give you wisdom of doing your job. I don't, I, I'll make it clear, I don't want your job. Some of it, what you go through, and I say my opinion, I say in my opinion what I believe in, but I think I'd rather not be up there, so.
I'll tell you what, you're always respectful when you come down. We appreciate you from that side.
Have a happy Labor Day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, I've got a couple questions. I know we got a few, well, come on down, sir. I'm sorry. So I've got a few questions. I forgot to get, get out.
You better write them down.
Okay. Sorry about that, sir.
My name is Mark Collins. I live at 2647 Sevilleby here in Burlington. I've got a couple issues. One, I've been fighting off and on probably for the last 20 years, but the answer always get out of the good boy club down here was we don't have the money, which is baloney. Sunnyside Avenue, 1700 block to, I believe it's a 2,000 block, from Hungry Bear to Pilger Street, is an unstriped street. People, because there's parking on the one side, people believe they can drive down the middle. I've had many, many close calls. I've seen other people have many close calls. It can't cost that much to go down way a double stripe in three blocks of Sunnyside. It used to be striped. When they redid it several years ago, they didn't re-stripe it. It needs to be done. The second issue I have, which I've talked to you about, Shane, and, you know, things happen, I have an overpopulation of wildlife in my yard. Deer, raccoon, and opossum. Part of the problem is our fault. We took out eight acres of woods when we built the layup hold school. The Diamond Ridge took out probably 12 acres.
Yep.
They don't have any place to go. I have a resident behind me that feeds the animals daily.
Here we go. Oh, there's always one.
Okay. This spring, there was two that I know of deer that were killed on Sunnyside Avenue, going to her house or from her house. So there's two cars that's been damaged and two deer, you know, that were killed. I go out every day and pick up six to eight piles of crap out of my backyard from the deer. My garden is almost nonexistent, which it will be gone next year. It'll be sod. I've lost a tree in a bush due to either eating the bush or rubbing on the tree, and the tree finally went over. One of the reasons I don't have is dog, is because I don't want to clean up the crap. So I go out and I clean up the deer. I talked to Tim Scott a few weeks ago. He's out at my house, and he was gonna look into a resolution about feeding animals like that. I know that's a, kind of a gray area, because people feed the squirrels, they feed the rat, or not the rabbits, the birds. So I know, you know, where do you draw the line? But I just, deer can cause a lot of damage, and I've got proof of that damage. And like I said, now we're drawing in raccoons and opossum, you know. I don't know what the answer is unless we can say, you just can't feed them anymore, period. What I'd like to see done, I did it in Iowa City in Coralville several years ago. They brought in sharpshooters.
Yep, they did.
And they fended out the herd. Ashburn Grove Cemetery is overrun with deer. And I'm sure some of them are probably coming, they come down. And I'm sure some of them are probably coming, they come down the railroad tracks there along Sunnyside Avenue, up, cross Sunnyside, and have their party. So, got any ideas?
Thank you, Mark.
You've been heard, we can't give you any ideas, but you've been heard, my friend, and.
Thank you.
Mark, do I still have your, do I still have your number?
I get them in my yard.
Make sure I get that, because I can't address it, but I do want to mention something.
You've got that concern about Sunnyside, Nick?
Well.
Yeah.
It seemed like that came up last year. And I, I can't remember, the timing of that was after you guys did the painting, but.
I brought that up to you last year.
This was a, this is part of a conversation of, there was a lot of things that were on a striping list at one point. I think due to budget cuts, it was removed. It's never been placed back on the list.
Seth thought it was something else.
No, that was what happened.
I mean, I thought it was.
I think the timing of when you asked me was probably way past when we were strapping, you know, we were done striping for the season.
We'd already done the striping for the season. But that's, that does make sense as something that could be looked at for this next season.
Oh, yes.
It is really bad on.
It's a safety concern, I mean.
Okay.
So that, as to a reason why we don't stripe Sunnyside? Because it was taken off the list of us to stripe?
I, I think that goes back to the point where out of the road use tax fund back, oh, probably 2008, somewhere in that timeframe, the, the maintenance and repair budget was stripped to
Fair minimum.
A very small amount. And we, we've got that back, built back up to, I mean, it was stripped down to about $50,000, I think, a year, and it's now at $200,000 a year that we do for just some general maintenance items like this. So we do have more money that's available. And that's an adjustment that Chris hasn't made back, but can be done.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Hey, a couple of quick ones that I'll slide in here real quick. What is the status of the Patterson Street repairs? Hey, Nick?
Let's wait, let's wait till he walks and sits down next time.
Yeah.
Last time I talked to Pat, he is still in conversation with the purchaser's attorney or the, the landowner's attorney. I don't know if he's make, made much headway.
What's the deadline for the Apollo project?
Apollo project, deadlines out for me.
I mean, we basically just have abstract work that has all been done. We just got back that, back at the end of last week. And I don't know if you've made, made contact with the purchaser yet?
I, I need to follow up with Jesse to see your timing on that. But we have the information too closed, just need to set that.
We just, we didn't get that till either Friday or over the weekend, one or the other.
Yeah, the end of the week.
Nick, what about North and North Fourth Street? Sorry, Ed.
That's, that's in the Public Works, Public Works report, but you.
I think they're starting tomorrow, actually.
They're here, huh? Puck Sodani?
Yep. Yeah, they've, they've hired some subs, they've hired FI to do a lot of the pipe work, so. You'll see some activity going on, though, their footprint should be fairly small. They will have street closure signs, it's a low-traffic road, so they'll have it on the corners there. And when they're dropping pipe overhead, I've asked them to take some sort of safety concerns with bluff road. I don't think there's a strong likelihood that pipe or people or trees or stuff could end up on that road, but I have a little concern, so.
Thank you.
Uh, what's the status of the Depot Restaurant Project?
We submitted a lease.
Have we had any further discussion?
We submitted a lease to Matt the end of June. I talked with him last week, and he's not ready to make any, or provide any comments yet on suggested modifications to that. We're waiting for that, but he's just not in a position yet to give us that. So until we get something back from him to start making any potential adjustments to that, we, we don't have anywhere to go with that. Now, that being said, you're doing some of the components of the white box now, aren't you? Or looking at it now?
Yes, we currently, I don't know if you've noticed, we're doing the storm sewer project down there. As a part of that project, we're going to take and lay a little sanitary lateral across our parking lot to connect to the existing lateral, so it can be set up for when the sewer connection needs to get made. It'll help with pavement replacement. It'll be laid in essentially the same trench that the storm sewer pipe is, just off to the side. And there's also some ADA concerns that were brought up a while back. We're going to correct those too, so we kind of have a three birds, one stone project, so.
Big ADA concerns?
Um, the.
We did a, we did a full review of the, the whole facility. Hadn't, you had an outside consultant come in to do that.
Out of Chicago. The U.S. Attorneys at Department of Justice sent us a letter that they were going to take a look at it. So we, we did a review of it, and there were some modifications that needed to be made, mostly in concrete forms. They were going to get tore up anyway with the storm sewer project, so we're just going to correct them all, so.
When will the, when will the HESCO barriers be gone? And when will the council learn more about the ongoing environmental assessments? What's the next step after phase one and phase two testing?
I'll do HESCOs, you can do environmental.
And that's all, and that's all?
The HESCOs will not be removed until that flood wall is up.
Okay.
They were going to potentially be coming down because of the construction site. Didn't know if there was going to be enough room for them to be able to operate. There is enough room, and I think for protection's sake, that it's best if they get left up throughout the whole thing. I mean, in theory, they could be taken down, but if a flood were, a flood event were to come, there's no way we would be able to get in there enough time to be able to protect the auditorium, so. They're not really hurting anything, yes, they don't look good, but in the scheme of, of things, they'll be down next May, and then you won't ever have, we won't ever have to worry about them again.
Not at that location.
There, there will need to be use of HESCO barriers on, on the north and south end to be able to tie the flood wall and have it function, so.
Okay, okay.
We had some discussions even with the, the HESCO barriers, specifically on the south side of the facility, whether we could remove a portion of those while construction is going on. Be pretty, it'd be difficult at best to remove any portion of those and still have the ability to put them back up while a construction project is going on over the next few months. That being said, if we take some down, our past experiences that when you try to meld them back together, you create a weak point. So, and that's one of the concerns that we want to try to avoid. You know what is giving me a sneaky eye with that?
What are you smiling about, James? Anyways, before I was so rudely interrupted, anybody else from the audience, comments or concerns? The man in the pretty suit, come on, Dan.
Freddie Starling, 517 South Seventh Street, Burlington, Iowa. And I'm here tonight to express my gratitude and appreciation for our city manager. And I know he's going to stay after tonight, because we're going to preach, but.
He brought, he brought a sermon with him. Somebody lock the door.
I am.
If I stayed, does that change how long you talk?
Oh, terrible.
Don't worry, he says that to me all the time, don't worry about it.
But I, I am, I'm, I'm, I came tonight, I had a lot of other things that I really, really need to be doing, but I had to come tonight too, because you never know. You never know about next week, next month, next council meeting, or whatever. But I wanted to, I say I appreciate the, I appreciate the city manager. I appreciate the city council for the five years making, what I say, a very wise choice. It looked like we're going to have to maybe do it again, but I, I'm grateful and I'm appreciative because there's not one event of service that I called the city manager. He didn't send someone, he came himself. And I, I want to say I'm, I'm grateful and I thank you, because I know there are other things you could have been doing. You supported the, the, the council of churches. You made, you're encouraging speeches to us. You encouraged over at the church where I pastor, Faith Temple, situations that were taking place. We invited you, we called on you. There was other occasions at the church, we called on you, and you were very supportive. And I want you to know that I really, really appreciate it, because you didn't have to do it. The Dr. King celebration, I don't believe you missed the celebration. You came to the city council meeting, you left the city council meeting, and you came back. And I just wanted you to know how, that I appreciate you. The ones that I'm working with appreciate you, and I'm speaking that tonight on their behalf also. And I want to say this, there are some bumps in the road. And if you would follow me on preaching on Sunday, Bible class, you name it. There are going to be some bumps in the road.
That's true.
Regardless, as a pastor, you pull out all, you pull out, and still you feel that you weren't too appreciated, or, or you weren't, you didn't do your best. And sometimes we tend to beat ourselves up, I could have done better. And there are those say, hey, you did a marvelous job. I did? You know. So I'm saying tonight, you're going to run into some bumps in the road. You're going to run into some pats on the back. You're going to run into some, you know, this is just a part of life. And I want to just express how grateful I am and I appreciate you, and, and I would love for you to remain, and I guess I'm going to keep on preaching. But anyway, thank you very much. Then I wanted to just ask, was it Eric? How are we, how are we progressing? I hadn't talked with you. You said there was some progress back in July, I believe, and we have about 10 months. We, we pray that we can have the shelter house up there, Gladys White.
We, we met with Chris Clements and Jesse Hall, city engineering and streets and sewers down at White Park this past Thursday, actually. Wanted to go over where the sewers were located, what some options are there. That is an area where there will be some future sewer separation issues and items, and want to make sure what we do isn't, doesn't conflict with that. And also work with Jesse on how those would impact that. So looks like we, Ryan Gorley and myself met down there with Chris and Jesse, trying to get the shelter in this fall on the basketball court area, the asphalt area there to the east, and then do some of the other grading and playground area probably next spring. But wanted to try and do that first phase this fall with the open-air shelter, a small open-air shelter there, and some of the resurfacing on that asphalt area, and then do the remaining work in the spring when we're able to get design, better design work, work with Jesse on that and have that complete over the winter and go out to bid in the spring. So, so they're looking to do that, that shelter this fall yet.
Good deal, good deal.
But then some of the other improvements wouldn't happen until next spring.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Elmer?
I want to follow the Reverend as well, Mike Elmer, 620 Iowa Street. Jim, I've talked to you in private several times, and I want to share in his thoughts that you've been a very good city manager in helping those words behind, hopefully come true. Great place to live, work, and play. And I've talked to hundreds of people that very much would like you to reconsider, so please do. You've done a great job, and this city does need somebody like you, so thanks about that.
Thank you, Mr. Elmer. Any comments or concerns from the audience? You guys have been fantastic tonight. Mr. Teslin?
Well, yeah, the thing you mentioned was brownfields. We do have a.
Yes, sir.
A website, BurlingtonBrownFields.com. If you go to that, that gives an update on all the status of the projects. We have two grants, there are area-wide planning as well as an assessment grant, so that gives an update on what we're doing with those and talks about how to, if you have an interest in doing an assessment on your property of phase one or phase two, who to contact and how to do that, and then just what that means, so. There is a website dedicated to the brownfield projects that we're working on. It's BurlingtonBrownFields.com.
Okay. What happens potentially with projects or properties that go through the phase one, phase two? Where they, do they get, have, have anything in line to deal with any issues that get brought up?
Well, it, it'll bring up what, if there are environmental issues, especially the phase two, and then make the individual aware of what needs to be done, what might not need to be done if they sell or transfer their property. So that they're fully aware, if they're wanting to sell or develop their property, these are things that are going to be identified or required when they do sell or develop their property. So it makes them aware, there are, does hopefully set them up to maybe access future grants. We don't have, we haven't applied for grants at this time for those cleanups, but might be better in line to be more available to them once they're done.
What we've seen from track records in other communities that have gone through this process, at least from a federal level, the EPA funding when they do planning grants or the assessment grants, they typically put you into a more favorable status when you go for, applying for cleanup grants for projects. Similar to what we did with the Dresser-Rans site, we didn't get it. Well, you, you have a more, a greater likelihood of getting, being successful on those grant applications if you've, if they've been involved with you over a period of years doing assessments upfront. But that being said, that cleanup process, working with the EPA, is a decade or two decades of work that you see occurring. Sioux City is an example, just announced a, a major project on the Morel's, the John Morel site, the former Morel site. That was a cleanup grant that they received back in 2012 on a major site. And they're just now in a position where they're seeing further work being able to be done. It doesn't happen overnight. So even within the context of what's been the case with the EPA in, over the last one or two decades, it's a slow process. Given a national framework where the EPA has seen a dramatic change in focus, we're not really sure what's happening with the potential for cleanup grants as we move forward, coming out of the assessment process. But as time goes on, it would make sense for the community to try to, where we can, to move forward with the cleanup grants as possible. I don't know if that gives a little bit more detail, that's not necessarily specific to the property in question.
Okay. Kathleen, do you have anything? Answer that? You always do. What do you got?
Oh, my goodness. It's a busy week this week. Well, the bees are in town.
Okay.
So they're playing at Community Field every day, basically. Every day.
Dancing Bob will be out there?
Yes, 6:30 to 9:00, it's always a fun time. Wednesday, out at Stars Cave, they have this free rock climbing thing. You know, you don't need any experience, just go out there and learn a little bit about some rock climbing.
Old people can do it too?
Yeah.
You got to stop out there, Jim, go ahead.
That's from 1:00 to 4:00. So, you know, go out there, walk the trails. That should be good. That's Wednesday, the 23rd. Then, of course, the farmer's market, that's going on till the 28th. Wait, that's, it's ending soon, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, man. Got to get out there and get all your.
Yeah, stock up on fresh, fresh vegetables, you can always can it.
Fresh veggies. Or there'll, there's some canned ones out there already.
Excuse me?
Yeah. And that's from 4:30 to 7:30 on, on Thursday, so that's fun. Family Art Day at the Art Center. That is on Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. That's going to be fun. Bring out all the kiddos. And this is in West Burlington, this next event. But that's okay, because it's for the Des Moines County Humane Society.
There you go.
You bring out your dog, paddle in the park from 12:00 to 3:00. $5 per dog, $1 per human. And then Sunday, one of my favorite places, the Capitol Theater, is the movie day, Harry Potter Chamber of Secrets. Kids 12 and under are free, and the adults are just $5. One showing at 2:00, and the other showing at 7:00, that's Sunday. So, all kinds of good stuff going on, all kinds of different hours. Get out there and have some fun, people. Enjoy our little wonderful town.
Notice how she said that? Get out there and have some fun, people. Enjoy our wonderful. Okay, Yen Vils?
That's it, thank you.
All right, all right. Mayor Protim?
Hundreds of young people are going out to have fun on a Wednesday, because school starts.
What's wrong with where he is going with that?
And it looks like some parents are going to.
You know it.
Chief, would you like to say anything about traffic and?
Hundreds of kids.
School buses and?
Oh, yeah.
I know, I'm putting you on the spot here, but.
Yeah, no, it'll be like every year. I mean, through the governor's traffic safety lines, we get that grant every year, and we spend probably 80% of those dollars enforcing the speed limits in the school zones, the speed limits in the school zones, and especially the first two or three weeks of school. I mean, we all know it's coming, but it's, it's a stark reminder.
Yeah.
That we really need to be mindful in the school zones. Uh, one thing I will say about the school bus violations, we, I think are all fairly aware of the camera systems that they have on the buses now that are very detailed, and with that said, that ticket will cost you your driver's license, so, I mean, you need to really be cautious, I mean, when a school bus puts out its arm in the stop signal, that's what it means, so. And it's not just the inconvenience of having to stop, but it's the safety of our children, so that's number one.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And so there's a number of my friends who are former teachers, and we kinda get happy on Wednesday too, because we go play golf instead of go teach.
I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna say.
Not that I didn't like my job, 'cause I loved my job, and I, anyway, it's my turn to go play golf, so, there you go.
Well, I'm a substitute teacher.
Yeah.
So I'm looking forward to being with the students, if they call me. Otherwise, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Uh, Jim, I've got something for tonight, and, uh, I'm gonna put you on the, I'm gonna put you in a corner, and I'm gonna put you, put the heat on you, and, uh, you're not gonna weasel your way out of this one.
More so than Dean or Reverend, I mean.
I had superintendent come down for backup, so, uh, here's how this is gonna be, brother.
Where's he going? Oh. Could you give us your name, please, and address?
My name is Shane McCamell, I live at Bob Fleming's house in the basement.
This is serious business, Jim.
It says, "After many emails and letters received over the last few weeks from city staff, department heads, citizens, and local businessmen, I am compelled to do what a mayor should do in a time such as this. I must ask you to stay on as our city manager, not only to finish out this year, but to commit to at least to the year, to the end of 2018. We're so close to reaching goals that were implemented by you, and we're still in the midst of projects that just cannot be finished without the present team assembled to make sure everything continues as planned. I realize, as does the council, that you made your decision and that you were satisfied with it. As a council and a city, we're not satisfied. I told you years ago, when you first came here, that we were gonna be like a small family, and as a small family, we can be honest with each other. The honesty for you is that you know this job, and you've already cultivated a relationship with staff, you know the surprises that are facing us these next few years, and you've already begun the process of how you will help us to face them. You have a good support team around you, yes, even at City Hall, and as you continue to deal with the perplex, perplexities of life, I, as the mayor, and we, the city of, City Council of Burlington, Iowa, collectively reject your resignation immediately, and we're calling you back to work as our permanent city manager right now. I also hope we groom our assistant city manager and prepare him for the next opportunity that presents itself down the road. We thank you for your past work, and we look forward to seeing you, or seeing it through into the future, and we thank you for accepting." So Jim, I'm putting you on the hot seat, but I'm gonna ask you, on behalf of citizens and this council, to finish this year out for us, and to see us through, it's 2018, to make sure that we've, uh, we're in a position to, uh, to move forward. And, uh, I'm gonna ask for a reply from you tonight.
No pressure.
So.
I second the motion.
I think he secretly hates me.
It's not a secret.
There've been a lot of comments that have come across over the last couple of weeks, I know you all have received them, I have too, and it's been a nice, tremendous outpouring. Um, you know, there've been some changes that have occurred in the last couple of weeks too, that changed some of the circumstances, uh, and I hope you can realize that we have, well, we as a family have gone through a lot this year, which is probably part of the context for, for stuff. Um, and I think of Reverend you speaking, uh, one of the things that I think of, I think it's Second Corinthians 5:9, "Therefore I make it my ambition, whether at home or absence, to be pleasing to him." You know, I try to do what I can, and I don't do it very good sometimes, but the goal here is to do whatever comes in front of us as well as we can, not for ourselves, but for what we demonstrate to the world around us. You know, and that starts for me first and foremost, taking care of my family.
Yeah.
And this year is unique with that. Uh, but given that part of taking care of my family is making sure they're, they're in the right place too, and I can retract my resignation for now.
James?
Yep. Of course, that means you have to accept that.
I move that we accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
How does the superintendent feel about it?
We're out of, we're out of order.
We're out of order.
We're out, we're so out of order right now. Okay, um, we appreciate everybody, uh, your, your kindness tonight, your concern, yes, sir.
We did have another item.
Did we?
Yes, if Eric wanted to put up a picture.
Please do. We're so out of order right now.
So, going back to when we did the, the flood wall, um, one of the things that VNK had talked about, uh, was, as they put together the full design, was trying to go after various pieces of additional funding to help to do other components. Um, one of those was for boat docks, the, the extended boat dock that comes out, that's shown here, uh, out from the flood wall, uh, running the entire length, uh, they, they had worked on a full, uh, proposal that would include not just the work there, but putting lighting along there, uh, doing some expansions off of the, uh, port, uh, putting in a fish cleaning, I think it had fish, fish cleaning in it, uh, some restroom facilities, outdoor restroom facilities that would be there that boat, that boater, people tying up to the boater docks would be able to come in and use. All those components, the overall project, they had, looking at a, like a three and a half million dollar project, and they were talking about going after various funds to try to see if they could accomplish that. Um, we did get, uh, we are going to be meeting with DNR, uh, next, at the beginning of September, as a follow-up to an application that we had submitted last year with this project, uh, Boating Infrastructure Grant Program, it's a state of Iowa program, um, they, the application was for two hundred thousand dollars of funds to help do the planning and design work for, uh, this project to occur. Um, that same grant fund, if we're able to move, we're able to move forward, would be something that would be eligible to then springboard out of the planning to go and apply for funding from that same source for construction work, and other communities have been able to leverage, uh, that funding to use the, um, get the design work done on the upfront, and then do the design work, and then go to that same fund to get the project completed in, in later years. So we're looking, just wanna let you know that we're looking decent for moving forward with, with this project. Now, that being said, the overall project that was put in was a pretty significant figure, and, and that's something that we need to talk with VNK and the state about, where, where can we go with this? Uh, what do we, can we do, can we look at the concept of the overall thing, or can we submit for a portion, or, or what? But that's something that we'll be visiting with DNR over the next few weeks. That's all I really had, I wanted to make sure you just knew where we were sitting on that.
Okay, are we good then?
I do have a couple things that I wanted to put on, um, to discuss, I guess, maybe, at a later date.
Okay.
Um, the ordinances, um, things like that for.
Good deal.
Uh, building codes, unsafe houses, I just kinda wanted to bring that up.
Yeah.
Put that on there to talk about.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Clemmie?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody, good night.
Thank you, thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.